I'm Senator.
Hi. At 6:00 PM, we'll call this meeting to order. The October 15th regular city council meeting for the city council. Uh, roholtwise Melissa Simpson is out. She has an excused absence. She's at work uh for some medical related, not for her medical related issues. But for so um with that, let's jump to the. Please join me for a clip.
I am glad that I am the United States of America and in your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four is consideration of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they need to change or any comments concerning the agenda? All right, seeing none, I have motion to approve the agenda.
So.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. All right. Uh, item five, consideration of consent agenda. All these items will be taken in one motion and we'd no separate discussion. It's A through E minutes of the September 17th city council regular meeting minutes of the October 1st regular city council meeting uh bills of the session from September 1st to September 30th, 2025 receipts of the session same date, September 1st to September 30th, and a profit and loss uh statement by class from September 1st through September 30th, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve all of those?
So.
I'll say.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Consent minute passes. Linda, do we have any announcements or correspondence you're aware?
Less than I'm aware of, no.
All right, thank you. Uh, same for me. We'll go right on to item seven, the reason you all came today. We say this last school district board presentation. Well, we'll turn to the year.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor McGuire and members of the city council. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. I'm Bob Orr. I am the chair of the Facilities Advisory Committee of the School Board. Uh, joining me tonight is Mr. Hart Road, who is the vice chair and also the principal of the high school and Sally wants, who is a member of the committee and also a member of the Florence City Council. Do you allow this kind of?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, perfect. Um, so I've actually been, uh, this is, this is a new iteration of the Facilities Advisory Committee in the last 18 months, about 18 months ago, we started up this version. Um, I've actually been chairing the Facility Advisory Committee for the last seven years, which is either my very good fortune or my eternal optimism or my utter stupidity. I'm not sure which, but I'm still here and I'm still hoping. So, um, the committee was assigned the um, the responsibilities of looking into the facilities of the school district and determining what it is that the district needs and um, what recommendations can we make to the school board? We have gone through a number of meetings. We have had tours of the schools. We have um, talked to people. Um, we have an architect that's been working with us and we have come to the stage of community input. So the reason we're here this evening is because we are getting around to as many groups and individuals as we can to see what people think in the community of the proposals that we may take to the school board and we want to go to the school board with an understanding as best we can of what the community is thinking about the work that we've been doing and the proposals that we may make. Um, so once we may finish this process up um, in maybe December of this year, take a recommendation to the school board, the school board will be need to decide whether or not they want to issue uh, to, to uh, put forth bond measure and how much it would be for and what its purposes would be. So that's the board's decision. We are an advisory group. Oh, you have to turn it on first. Okay, technology. Right? So, um, every strong community has some features in common and uh, one of those is schools. In a science law school district in the communities around here, we have wonderful people. We have great businesses. We have beautiful surroundings and we have strong schools, but we have inadequate facilities. And we have certainly, if we didn't already know that or sense it, we have certainly learned that in this process. This is the current high school. Most of you are probably familiar with it. Some of you may have gone there. Some of you I know have children or grandchildren or others who are there or have gone there. This building is approximately 110,000 square feet. It was built in, it was finished in 1970. This picture, as far as I can tell, does not include the two modulators. Um, we have two modular buildings that we brought in a couple of years ago. One is for administration and the other one is for the math department. So we call that math island. Uh, we don't call it administrative island, however. We have identified some, what we consider to be urgent issues that go with the high school. And I'll get to the elementary school in a few minutes, but both are important. So first of all, we have an aging building. The building was started, the construction was started in 1968, which is 57 years ago. It was given, the bid was given to the lowest bidder and unfortunately, one of the ways of cutting back on expenses was to use equipment that was not as good as it should have been and in some cases was actually outdated by the time it was installed. So the building should be in better condition than it is now, but um, there are definitely some needs, but we go through some of those needs. Failing systems, electrical. This building was built before the age of electricity and electronics. I mean, not before the age of electricity, before the age of electronics. Um, so our electrical system is, is aged and not able to support what it's shaping. Sometimes, and I'll get into this in a moment, sometimes the heating system goes down and then the teachers try using um, space heaters in their classrooms. Well, you plug in several space heaters along a line of classrooms and fuse plugs. So it's hard in some cases to stay warm and it seems like at least once a year, uh, the heating system does go down and the problem is it's so old that they have to either send out for parts or I've heard of a couple of cases where a part actually had to be made. Uh, it's, it's that old. So also, um, so the heating system, uh, the wiring and plumbing are also aging. Uh, we have plumbing that are pipes that are in the floor and the floor is concrete. So they were buried in the concrete and they're rocky. Um, and so you have, we would have to dig up the floors to repair the pipes. Safety. It was built, this building was built before Columbine and a lot of the other tragic shootings that have happened around the country since then. So, um, it is not, there are 17 entrances to the building and those entrances are very hard to monitor because they're all around the building. So if you, um, you know, kids, they'll prop open a door so that their friends can get in later or so that they can get back into the building after once. And um, we can't be everywhere at once and when a building, when a door is propped open, it obviously poses a safety risk. Maintenance of the entire district maintenance budget, uh, the buildings, the grounds, everything, about 40% is spent on the high school. So if we had a facility, we could certainly save money on maintenance and I have heard, I cannot verify this fact, I have heard that we would save tens of thousands just on the electric bill because we would have more efficient equipment. Structural. This building was built before seismic codes. So the main high school building is not seismically sound. It would definitely suffer damage in a moderate earthquake and it would suffer very serious damage in a large earthquake. Capacity. This building was built for 350 students. We have consistently over the past number of years, uh, operated with more than 350. We have about 380 to 390 right now, we're a little under 400. We have been up around 450. Um, it fluctuates and that's a, a natural cycle, it seems, but the fact of the matter is anything over 350 and we're crowded. And the classrooms, many of them are too small. Some of them have no windows. Some of them have no uh, central ventilation systems or part of the central ventilation system. And they lack flexibility. And the reason I've mentioned flexibility is because in today's educational world, um, teachers don't just stand up in front of the room and teach. They move around. The, the, the chairs need to move, the tables need to move. They need kids to be engaged in activities and that can't happen in a classroom that is packed with desks. So the teachers often can't do things that they would like to be able to do. We don't have a kitchen or cafeteria. The mall is too small to fit the students into it, um, at lunchtime to fit all the students in. Many of them leave campus. That's not the only reason, but certainly there are, um, if we had a larger facility, larger space, more kids could stay on campus and have places to sit. We may not have a kitchen even with a rebuild, but um, that isn't our highest priority because there is a kitchen at the elementary school, um, and the food is brought up to the high school and it seems to work okay. Basic amenities, last category here. Locker rooms. Any of you have seen the locker rooms? They haven't changed much over the years and particularly, um, they're, they're outdated. They are inadequate, they're unpleasant and particularly the girls locker room. In the girls locker room for showers, there is one post in the middle of a tiled area and there are showerheads coming out at the top of the post all the way around. So if girls are taking showers, they're looking right across at each other and that's not very bright. The bathrooms also are not as private as they should be. There are big gaps between the, the doors and the, and the walls of the stalls. Um, and um, in fact, there's one and we have a picture of it, but it's not, it's not, we're not going to show it tonight, where the toilet is actually unprotected by a surrounding. The kids don't tend to use that one, but, but it is a fact. And if we remodel the bathrooms, then we get into codes, which would actually uh, cause us to have to, to have to cut back on the number of stalls in order to make the right sizes uh, for, for the equipment. So it's, it's not, and, and, and let me just say that's, people say to us, well, why don't you just fix this or why don't you just fix that? Well, yes, we could, but when you add all these things up together, it just doesn't make sense. And I'm going to talk in a few minutes about, because we did look at remodeling the building in a major way and I'll talk about what the problem is with that. Um, we have second floors that don't connect. We have two second floors in the main building and they're not connected. We have lifts, but they're not great. They do the job. We had a lift put into the, for one of the floors a couple, a year or two ago and it, it works, but it's not, it's not for real elevator. It, it is mainly for students who um, maybe have been injured and need to get up to the second floor, but those second floor classrooms have actually at this point been kind of decommissioned because they're small and they, they don't have natural light. They're, they're not very pleasant classrooms. Um, we don't have an auditorium and that is, to me, that's one of the biggest factors because we can't have, we can't realistically, we have assemblies, guest speakers, musical performances, things of that sort. If we do anything like that, we pretty much, we either have to use a gymnasium, which has terrible acoustics, or we have to take the kids over to the FEC. To do that, we have to put them in buses. We have to have a reservation ahead of time. It costs us for the buses, it costs us for the rental of the FEC and it's just not practical. Um, if we wanted to have an assembly for a class period, it would take the entire morning to get the kids all bussed over there and bring them back and it's just not, it's just not feasible. Okay, um, just a, a quick slide here to show you, the classrooms that we feel we need are 30 by 40. The classrooms that we have now are, they're not all this big, but we have classrooms of 24, approximately 24 by 33. So what would happen, and we need at least a couple more classrooms. So what we're looking at here is a couple more classrooms, but basically bigger classrooms, which would then allow us to do the kinds of activities that are important um, in today's educational world. Okay, now let's look at the elementary school. So elementary school was built in four phases. Original at the south end, so you're looking to the left at the south end, was built in 1965. The others, 1982, 1985, and 1992. The worst is the original because that was actually built even before the high school. So it is not seismic, seismically sound and there are other, other things about that that are a problem, but um, the, it's been a kind of a, an add-on process. Let me talk a little bit about the problems with the elementary school. First of all, the kindergarten is in a building outside of the main building. So it's not, it's not, it's isolated. It's not connected physically or kind of psychologically with the rest of the school and it's in a building that was uh, installed in 2015, but it was not intended to be a permanent building. It was supposed to last about 15 years. It's, this is your level, so, or just about your level. So we're coming up on the end of the useful life of that. We really need to get the kindergarten into the main building and that's one of the things that we have been looking at. The classrooms constructed in three separate or four separate projects, um, some have poor lighting, lack of windows and a kind of an unpleasant, uninvited surrounding. For the systems, electrical capacity again is a problem. And then um, we had a, a long period where we lost hot water and uh, the intercom system, when you're trying to wire it through four different iterations of a building, it's, it's, it's muddy. Safety and security, the oldest portion, as I mentioned, doesn't have uh, the seismic codes. The long walkways, let me go back here. Uh, there are long walkways at the, I think I have a, here. It was on. Here. It is on? I saw it for a minute. There we go. I have to hold it out. Okay, there are long walkways along here and here. Did I get that right, Mr. H?
Correct.
Okay. And those are open. And if you look at the one, whoa, okay, that's true. Oh, we're not there yet. Hold on. Back up. Okay. If you look at the one on Oak Street, it's really open to Oak Street. So it's not safe for the kids to be walking through there with, unaccompanied. So um, as we'll get to in a minute, that's an issue.
So where is the kindergarten building?
Kindergarten is over here. Is that it, Mr. H?
Yes.
Yes. Kindergarten building is off. So the, so the little guys have to have quite a walk to go from, okay, nope. Here we go. Right button. Okay. Little guys are walking from over here, over here. I'm not doing this quite right, but it's all the way over to here and they got little legs, but as I have heard, the reason we have such a strong cross-country team at the high school is because those guys are learning to walk, strong legs.
About a three block walk from where they are dropped off on the bus to get to their classroom.
Let's see. Oh, and then there's a rainy day structure up here. Uh, believe this is it, right?
No.
Nope. Right here? Okay. That rainy day structure is supposed to be a play area for kids when it's raining. The problem is all the sides are open and the wind tends to blow when it rains. So the water blows in. Now you combine that with the fact that the birds just love that place as their own space to stay out of the rain. So you got, and you know what birds do. So now you got the floor that's messy and wet and slippery and unpleasant and that needs to be affixed or replaced. Any of you that have driven down Oak Street uh, at arrival time or dismissal time know there's a lot of problems with traffic. Uh, long lines built up around Oak Street from the elementary school, um, and inadequate bus turnaround. Okay, so our preliminary recommendations, a minute, I covered that. Ah, here we go. Most critical, our committee has felt, is replacing the high school and we have two options, which I'm going to talk about in a second. One of them is 174,500 square feet. Compare that with 110,000 that we have now. Um, the other one is a somewhat scaled back version at 156,000 and I'll explain that in a moment. And somewhat less critical is improvements to the elementary school. So let's take a look at our proposal. First of all, oh, one thing before I do that. Our goal all along was to keep the bond rate at or below $3 per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. And please note, if you're not familiar with this, assessed value is not market value. It's considerably low. So what we're looking at is assessed value and, and we are not talking about small dollar share. We know that. So replacement option number one for the high school, budget projection 122.8 million dollars. Here are some of the things that it would do for us. Two stories, it would be more compact, students could get from classroom to classroom more quickly. It fits on the current high school property. If you look here on the corner of 27th and Oak, this by the way, is not a, is not a design for the building. This is simply a concept. So don't look at this and say, gee, why is that courtyard in the middle? That's not, that's not to be taken that way. Um, but we don't have to buy new property. It adds square footage and flexibility to regular classrooms. That would help us a great deal. All new systems, obviously for the future. Includes an auditorium, uh, 14,500 square foot auditorium and more natural light. Uh, the natural light, studies have shown that education is significantly improved with natural light and um, some of our classrooms, as I mentioned, don't have any windows. Okay, that's option one. Option two is pretty much the same benefits, but reduce square footage. So we're cutting back by 18,000 um, square feet over option one and we're looking at $12 million savings over option one. This is not as good because it's smaller and we feel we really need the bigger socks, but there are some reasons that we wanted to do this and see what it would look like in a scaled back version. Mr. H?
Can I just point out where your current high school sits on this?
Oh, yes, please.
It's hard to see in the projection, but here is the footprint of the current high school. So what we're showing is this would be raised and this would be built in the, well, first this would be built, then this would be raised. The new school would be in the southeast corner of the property. So the current high school would no longer be part of the picture.
Perfect. Okay, um, and this would be, as you can see in the lower right corner there, uh, 25 year would be $2.65 per thousand assessed value and 30 year would be $2.43 per assessed, uh, thousand dollars in assessed value. This one cuts back on the size of the auditorium, cuts back by one, the number of classrooms and cuts back on the size of the classrooms. Other models we considered. So we looked at remodeling. Now here are the issues with remodeling. First of all, the cost is high. Once you start tearing into the building, you're going to find asbestos in the walls. You're going to find codes that have to be, building has to be brought up to code. You're going to find that there are seismic issues that have to be dealt with. The pipes that are buried in the concrete floors, there are things about it that are going to be costly. Number two, uh, whether we do one wing at a time or we do the entire building, there's going to be disruption to, to classes. Significant disruption over a period of time, probably years. Either we put them all in the modulators and we just re, remodel the building or we do it one wing at a time, in which case only part of it is disrupted, but the disruptions would be significant. Number three, we would still be left with an old foundation and core. So we haven't actually upgraded the entire facility, just parts of it. And number four, a bond issuance must be used within a specific period of time. We don't believe that all the remodeling could be done after the bond is issued. So what we'd have to do is do in two stages. And in fact, there is no guarantee that if we went out for a second bond to do the, the next stage, it would pass. So we could end up with a building that is half remodeled.
How many years is that in order to involve five?
Do you know what that is?
This would be looking at from the, the best case scenario that we studied would be five years from passage of a valid measure or passage of the construction bond.
Right.
Probably 12 to 18 months of planning and this would be four years of construction.
But is it five years to spend it? Is that state law?
I believe it's five years.
Okay. So if we're doing a piecemeal, that could be an issue. Yeah. Okay, um, now elementary school, we could move the kindergarten inside. This is by the way, is a 13 million, 13.7 million dollar proposal. We can move the kindergarten inside. We could fix the access issues along, we would enclose the corridors. Um, the oldest structures at the south end would be brought up to code. We would solve traffic issues and um, what we have here is what Mr. H refers to as the lollipop turnaround. This would be through the buses and that would get them off, off the streets and out of the way of the traffic. So that would help, um, I'm sure the neighbors would appreciate that. Okay, hang on just a second here. Let me get to the next sheet of paper, which is the next slide. Here we go. Okay, so just kind of to summarize, what is gained by the improvements? For the schools, wider range of opportunities, improve morale. The students have gotten discouraged when we have tried to go out for a bond and it hasn't passed. A new building brings better morale to everybody. Retention of teachers. There is difficulty here retaining teachers. It's a small town. If we had a, a better facility, I think it would help us. Better learning environment, more natural light, more suitable to today's education. Significantly improve safety and security. A high school that will last for decades, we hope, 75 years and operating cost savings. But there's more because we're also looking at the community. Attracting more businesses, bringing more professional families in with, with children who want to go through the schools here, more healthcare providers, we would hope. An increased tax base over time as people move in and therefore reducing the share that each of us has to carry. And um, there was a, a drop over the years in what each person had to pay for the middle school, uh, the bond and we paid it off early. That was 20 years, that was a 20-year bond. I think it was paid off right around the COVID, COVID year, 2020. Again, um, a high school that will last for decades to come. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong page here, just a second. Here we go. A green space for community use, where we now have building, we would put in fields where we now have a high school building and some of that could be available for the community. Um, an auditorium that would not only serve us, but could be as a supplement to the, to the FEC and a safe shelter in emergencies, um, like an earthquake or a tsunami or something like that for the community. So we believe there are some significant advantages to the community as well as to the school and of course, serving the kids serves the community. Local bonds are the only mechanism by which school construction projects in Oregon can take place. Um, and so that's why we have to look at a bond. This by the way, is the district and as you can see, it's quite geographically large. It goes up the coast, down the coast and inland toward McElton. It's a pretty large area and that tends to cause more traffic, believe it or not, on Oak Street because parents who don't want their kids on the bus for an hour may come in and pick them up and that's, that adds to the number of cars. And you, Mr. H, how many years were you principal of the elementary school?
11 years.
11 years. He's talked to parents, let's see what happens.
We've tried to convince people to take advantage of the buses and with so many families working in, in town in Florence proper, they want to be there to pick their kids up after school as opposed to race home to beat the bus.
Okay, why now? Well, here are construction costs. The bottom line is the consumer price index, 2014 to 2024. The two upper lines, the red and the blue, are construction inflation, which has been going up faster than consumer inflation and probably from all we can see will continue to do so. We had a bond measure in 2018 that we proposed and it was for 108 million, but 88 million of that was for the high school. Um, now we're looking at 110 or 122 for the high school. We really think we need to do this, otherwise the next time around, it's going to be more expensive and the next time around even more. So, okay, now, um, cost. So if we look at a median real estate um, value, market value of a home in um, 2024, 25, 435,000, just as an example. The assessed value on that house, 232,000. You got these statistics off the uh, county site. Option number one at a 30-year would cost around $52 a month for a homeowner in this category. Option number two, somewhat scaled back, $47 and the. And the elementary school, five, approximately a little under $6. Now, we, let me see what my next slide is here. Okay. If we did the largest replacement, option one, of the high school, and we added to that the elementary school remodel, we would be at exactly $3 per thousand of assessed value. And these numbers, of course, are, I mean, things change from last month to this month, but this is, these are our best estimates as of this time. Okay. We'd like to invite you to one or more presentations that are coming up. We have one on the 24th at 10:00 AM at the middle school. And the reason it's at the middle school is because it was originally going to be public plus teachers and staff members in the district. We moved them to 8:30 so that we could have time and space for more people to come in at the 10 o'clock. This is a more comprehensive presentation, if you'd like to know more. November 10th at 11:00 AM, we have a full presentation with tour at the, starting at the high school library. Love to have you come out for that. We also are here for input. I would say we are primarily here for input. If it's not something, I don't know how the rules go, Mayor, about how you do this. But if it's not something we can entertain at this presentation, we do have a website. We can get that to all of you. And you may certainly offer your comments through that. It's a Google poll, or a Google, I guess it's called a poll. We'd love to have input. There's a place for comments. And we need to know what the thinking is in the queue.
Sure. Well, it's a presentation item, so everyone can comment. We don't take any actions, so.
Yeah, okay.
It could be a free fall if you want.
Are there questions?
Yeah, let's start with the council. Do you have any specifics?
Well, it's a lot of information, Bob. I am not computer savvy, so I would like to have this in a hard copy so I can look at it.
We can do that.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. We've got our copies written right tonight.
With my business where I'm at in Florence, I've already had a lot of people stopping in my shop and asking me what I'm thinking. I have my mind up, you know, so.
Yeah.
I'd like to have your presentation in my good.
Perfect. Yep, I'll stop by.
All right. Susan, any questions?
No, there's a lot of information right now. I just need to look at some facts and figures and do some research.
Okay.
Rich, you know, just doing the rep preliminary figure there. I mean, if you're looking at a $1.5 million tax assessed piece of property, you're, you're looking at about $3,000 a year just in taxes.
Yes.
You know, I really don't see where you're going to find many people that are going to vote for that. And there's, there's a lot of $1.5 million going to around here that they don't have kids that are going to go to school. So I think if I'm going to have to find something, it's going to be a little more competitive.
See, I totally, totally understand. Our feeling is, what's, what are our options? Because we've looked at options. And we know this is below the line. But we don't, I mean, the building is getting worse every year. What are we going to do? But I, you're a business owner, you've got a piece of property.
I'm here to tell you right now, I mean, $3,000 out of my piece of property is not something I can afford.
Yeah, I understand.
And, you know, I mean, that, that's not going to be an easy one to choke at all.
Yeah.
I mean, basically what that does is that forces you into paying me more, which, because you're going to have to pay my product more.
Yeah.
But when, when in turn, what that's going to do is that's going to reduce the amount of business that's coming into my facility. Because you can now, now a little longer afford to go out to eat. So.
Your hammer is a good question.
That's across the board.
Yeah, I hear you.
I have a question about the size.
Yeah.
You said current built, the high school's built for 350. You had more classrooms and bigger classrooms. Does that, does that cover your, I mean, from an education perspective? You get 450 in there if the city grows or what's the, what's the target?
We, go ahead.
Both models, the, the smaller model and larger model would allow for some, or growth in student population. We're at a level right now nationwide in the birth rate.
Right.
Sarah, they exist 2008. In fact, the group of seniors who are sitting in class now, they are the largest group by far in the district. It's almost a 40 student drop off to this, the group right behind them. And it holds steady at about that number. But we would allow for modest growth. We don't anticipate a gold rush here in town. But we do anticipate that a new school would be a draw for families to consider moving to Florence. That's, that has been the pattern throughout the states. When new schools are built, they become a draw for, for families.
Then we don't have housing to.
Agreed.
Right, it's a gross flow. I mean, it's, it's compounding issue.
Yeah.
So the way it's laid out, without getting in the weeds, is it, is it something that's scalable? Like you said, you wanted 23 classrooms, you go from 21 to 22 in the smaller model, 23 in the big model. But is it something that's? I won't say easily added on. I've done big construction before, it's never easy, but is it design?
It could be a.
That's not something we've looked at in, in our studies so far. However, when we get to the design phase, so for example, Bob mentioned that we really have just a concept of the square footage we would need per category of the school. When we get to the design stage, if it becomes a, a construction bond on the ballot, then we'd have to design phase. We could be looking at ways where we could build big enough for now, make room for expansion.
Right, separate bond issue 10, 10 years from now, right? Because you're not going to pull it, I agree, you're not going to do it.
That's precisely the kind of feedback we need, is that we should be looking at options like that. So that's, well, that's the reason we're coming out to.
Yeah. And I know you got to do a one-issue bond issue, or a one-issue bond, a ballot question.
Yeah.
And every once in a while, something comes in less expensive than you thought. So if you've laid that out, say, you know, if we added money, we're going to do the auditorium. And if we don't, we don't. But then you get that cost down to satisfy Rich a little bit. And then, you know, if budget allows, you add it on. I've done a couple of big facilities that were meant to double if you could, you know, you had hallways and mechanical systems and made it easy to extend. They were similar to schools, big and small shops, it was very similar construction actually.
Definitely worth, worth looking at. And, and Rich, your feedback is very helpful too. We understand that's a big issue. And this is feedback that we will take back with us and discuss it with the board.
Yep. This very process is something that we've missed in previous attempts at the bond. We haven't, we've gone straightforward right to design because at the time we had a $4 million master of the state and that seemed like a big chunk of the project. But the cost of doing that, we rushed the process. We didn't do community engagement. We didn't get this kind of feedback to know what is the, the right option to present to the board. That's why what we have today are preliminary options that we are considering bringing to the board later this school year.
Chris?
First of all.
Schooling kids, take it away.
They're going to be gone.
They're going to be gone by the time this comes to, if it comes to fruition.
We're not your target.
Yeah. No, but I, I definitely have seen the issues in person going there. And things like this don't get better with time.
No.
So, so saying we're going to have a delay only makes the issue bigger.
Yeah.
Puts another generation of kids through less than ideal education facilities. So, yeah, it's expensive, but I think something, to some degree, something's going to have to go.
Larry?
Well, I have a few thoughts. The, just the sense I get from talking with folks is that it's, it's particularly difficult for them to anticipate this bond when governments add fees to water bills.
We've heard the same.
And that's unfortunate.
We'll straight up tell you this is going to be a tax and it's going to be expensive. We're not trying to obfuscate the cost.
I understand. So the, the reason behind the statute to limit municipal capability to increase property taxes was to constrain the growth of government. But when that government grows faster than that constraint, that legislative constraint, then of course, the option to come up with a fee is a workaround that isn't invisible to people who are paying. And that's going to be really hard as a, as a mental hurdle when a fee goes up every year in a large way. And it's not clear that the fee is all for law enforcement. So just looking at the community, the feedback I'm hearing is that people are a little bit sensitive about, you know, their social security checks not going up by very much every year. And inflation is a factor. And it's, it's like, it's like the Titanic, you know? It's like rearranging the neckchairs on the Titanic. But the problem we have is we, we desperately need this new high school, no question about it. So we're trying to figure out how we're going to reach people's better angels in a retirement community who are already sensitive about the fact they're being handled in nine, in some cases, 10 to 15 to dollars per month increases. We're going to ask them to also approve this bond. And that's heavy lifting, really heavy lifting. And, and you're doing a good job here. You know, Doom City is, we don't have a lot of kids here. And I know that some of these other areas geographically don't have a lot of kids. So the best argument I can make for it is that we, as a community, if I, as a senior myself, what do I want to see in this community? I want to see a vibrant community with a strong healthcare system. And I personally know most of our healthcare providers in Florence, in one way or another. And some of them get discouraged here because of the lack of services for families and children and that sort of thing. We start with childcare and you go all the way up the spectrum. You know, activities, recreational activities for kids after school, that sort of thing. It, it's a challenge in this community. And so what happens is we get them here for two or three years and then they move on. But we need to make that, we need to get that to change. And one way to do that is by, like I said, having a nice high school. The question is, how do we reach everybody's better angels to say, we really need this and we want you to figure out a way? The only thought I thought is that, you know, we don't have a property tax in Doom City. We operate very efficiently. And there's all kinds of different districts in the area. We have a fire district, an ambulance district, we have a library district, we have Lane County. It would be terrific if each of these agencies could find a way to reduce their, their draw on the public. And switch that money over to the school district. Because it's like we're almost last in line here. You know, all these other districts have put in continuing levies and this sort of thing. So it'd be nice if we could go back to the drawing boards, so to speak, and find money that's right here in front of us, just repurpose it. Because I, I really think it's going to be tough to get people to vote for this. The second question I had was, what's going to be the effect of the charter school?
Okay.
How will that, how will that factor in?
Bobby, you want to take this or do you like me to?
Well, I'll, I'll start and you can take it from there. So the charter school, we have told repeatedly, will not go past the eighth grade. So if we, I mean, the remodel at the elementary school is more than, it's, it's not really as much space as it is other things. Yes, there could be a reduction in, in the elementary school. Middle school, we're not looking to touch. Those kids are going to come to the high school, probably almost all of them, unless a few go to homeschooling. So our facility at the high school still needs to be expanded because we're not expecting to lose kids to the charter school there. Is that, you want to?
Yeah, there's also, the, the mission of the charter school from its inception has been to draw students to the district who are currently not being served by the district. So essentially the homeschooling community, trying to give them another option to come in. So if, if that holds true, then that would be an increase of students into the district and it would be a pretty cost neutral force. The tougher question, Larry, like you said, is trying to get people to vote when they don't have kids or grandkids threatening the school. And I don't know exactly what it is now. But when I moved here, what in 2010, that was one of the things my wife and I were looking at, was what's the ratio of families? And at that point, it was about one in 10 households in the district have a kid or a grandkid in the schools. So there isn't that direct connection to do it for the kid. We, we've learned, do it for the kids is not a real winning argument in this, in this case. But the school as a signifier of a vibrant community, as an economic engine, is one that we think has some merit. And an idea that has merit. We, I've gone to presentations, most recently at Florentine, I just asked the room, how many of you had a different doctor than you did five years ago? And almost every hand went up in the room. And that's not a direct correlation to the schools. But it's a connection to, to what Florence values and what Florence is offering. Mobile families who can take their talents elsewhere, if we want to be among the places that lands those families. Good quality schools that are attractive to teachers and retaining teachers, but also to keep you professionals coming to the area is a key factor. But making that point slowly and repeatedly into, and trying to get to our different areas. This is one of 25 meetings like this we have scheduled, or we're getting on other, to other people's agendas to talk about this issue. Because we're not certain that our preliminary recommendations are the right ones to present to the board. So we're very much shaping our preliminary into what will be a final recommendation. It was mentioned earlier today, we could only have a single issue on the ballot. We'll, we'll never get up there, you'll never see on your ballot, you want high school A, high school B, or elementary had. It'll be, A package will be presented, it'll be a yes or no vote on A package. We're trying to help shape what we think that package should be.
So is the demolition cost for the old high school included in the cost?
And these numbers are also, we factor in the projected inflation rate for the time of construction.
I see.
So those are future costs that we anticipate.
Is, is the school district subject to city of Florence planning requirements?
Yes.
So do you have to pay SDC fees to the city?
And that's all factored in as well. As part of the 18-month runoff that it would take to, for design and permitting.
Well, I just, I just know that the city, correct me if I'm wrong, Sally, the city has made reductions in those costs. And there's been affordable housing or low income housing, you know, projects. It just seems to me that that might be one way to offset some of the costs. Because I, I understand, having attempted to do a development in Florence, that the SDC fees, in my, in my opinion, are extreme. And I feel like the school should not have to jump through the hurdles. I did to get a project, which never did materialize because of those difficulties, so.
We're speaking to Florence City Council next week. And in gaining their support as, as a body for either this or whatever the ultimate puzzle ends up to be, we would be hoping for whatever sort of generous.
Well, we can't, we can't speak for them and I don't speak for them.
Sure.
I'm just, just reflecting on my experience. And I think that since this is right in the center of Florence, there ought to be some kind of assistance that can be rendered to make it happen a little easier, make the road a little less bumpy. Because there's plenty of examples of projects in Florence that take decades to get out of the ground because of this exact issue. And so it would be great if there was, at the beginning of the process, an understanding of where you're going to be and what those costs are going to be and how, how high the hurdle will be in terms of the funding department. Because that could change the whole picture, you know, to a great extent.
Another element that, I'm afraid I don't know enough about it at this point to, to speak to with a great authority. But we have heard that changes in the federal tax code mean that municipal taxes, including school district taxes, will be deductible from federal income. And there's the changes in the code, there might be some return to taxpayers for some of these, these costs that will be assessed. I, I plan to learn more about that before I speak any more than what I just have. So it's a hypothetical that an accountant told me last week.
Even at that, I mean, you know, with, with councils and, and the way things are going, the, the city of Florence really needs to look at, at becoming younger in life than in not keeping things to the point where it's just a stat.
It's not the city's regulation.
Yeah.
Otherwise, a couple of us are going to get kicked out. Whatever. Well, let's go to the audience. We've got a couple of audience. Mr. Jackson, do you have any questions?
Well, I have lots of thoughts. I've been through all this. I'm not a high school that doesn't exist anymore. And I've seen, I, I know of these. And I'm very concerned about the security aspect, especially at the elementary school. And we've got to get a handle on that. And I was noticing in the paper about, about the charter school coming in. I was involved with the charter school for a lot of years. And I, I respect what's happening there. And I, I hope the district and the, and the charter school work really closely together because she could do some great things for kids. And that's, I don't like to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, well, I appreciate you guys coming out and speaking. I know this is a, a tough subject with our older community. I personally, I have kids in the district, they will not be around once the building process.
They won't be around, they won't be in high school.
Well, yes.
But they might still be.
Thank you, Abby. Hopefully, they'll be in college. But I have, again, like Chris said, seen the problems of high school. And I agree that some things need to change for sure. And to Larry's point, getting more doctors and nurses and stuff in would be amazing because we had two PCMs that left. They were fantastic when we first got here. And they told us, it's because of childcare, they just can't stay here. So I think that's an important point, to get some new people in, medical people and retention of teachers, it's important. Thank you.
Thanks. Anne, you got it?
What was the average size of the classrooms right now, kids-wise?
Oh, scary.
Yeah.
Um, boy, that's a, very. It, it does. I would say, for just what I imagine you're thinking, how many kids are in a row for, in the classroom? And our content areas, so social studies, science, language arts, and mathematics, usually between 22 to 26. I think we have one class of 28. But that number is brought way down by when we factor in the number of students who are taking some of our specialized computer courses, where there may only be eight or 10, or there may only be 15 in the culinary class. So our overall ratio with the full denominator ends up being about 14 or 15 or 16 students. But for the number of students sitting in the content area classes, it's, it's quite a bit higher.
And it's crowded.
It, it's crowded not because of the number of students, it's crowded because of the number of students in that floor plan.
Right. Still, it's not as bad as some schools.
No, it's not.
You're right.
My kids went to Central Oregon, we had up to 38 kids in a class.
My last year teaching in the classroom.
Doing not very well.
And 36 in my classroom, in the elementary school.
They have a hard time learning.
Yep.
I'd like to mention one more thing, and that's about Peace Health. You know, a lot of people think that Peace Health is a business like other businesses, but it is not. You know, when you have a medical facility that accepts Medicare, let's face it, most of us are on Medicare. When a bill is produced by Peace Health, it might say $500, it might say $100,000. That's no reflection at all, but the hospital receives as reimbursement for your care. I served as a director of patient business affairs for two large hospitals, and I used to do Medicare cost accounting. And I would see bills that were millions of dollars that were reimbursed $17,000 out the door. Now, that difference between what is billed that the patient sees and what the hospital actually receives, the difference there, if it's below the actual cost of the hospital, they eat it. And how they eat it is they attempt to shift those costs onto those people who have self-pay or private insurance, they have Blue Cross, that kind of thing. They attempt to do that. That's called cost shifting. And one of the current debates in our society is that there are going to be a lot of small hospitals that will be closing in the near future if Congress and the president don't figure out what they're going to do with that. It's going to happen across the country. And it could happen here. And if our hospital were closed, well, that would change the dynamics of this high school tremendously.
It would really reshape the community as a whole.
It would be terribly, it'd be a huge change. You can imagine that campus just being shattered. And I, I know where, what I'm speaking because I understand the difference between cost and reimbursement. And over the years, this started with President Reagan, and it was a worthy cause because healthcare costs were going up so fast, they were going up at the same rate as technological advances in medicine. So some of this was good because we were learning new ways to cure people. But the government, in an attempt to get a cap on that, they changed from paying based on costs of a hospital or charges, they just came up with a system where they pay a flat fee for a particular diagnosis. And we had 463 diagnoses. So every patient fit into one of those, and regardless of their bill, that's how much the hospital received. Now, we're entering a new phase where even that level of reimbursement is going to be reduced. And a Medicare patient like myself never sees that. Because I get a little explanation of benefits bill in the mail and it shows, okay, your charges were $2,000 and the hospital got paid 95% of that, they really didn't. And I have to pay the 5% co-pay. When in reality, they probably got about $15 and I have to pay 95%, which is sometimes more than what the hospital collected from Medicare. So the fact that the hospitals, all these healthcare providers, doctors and clinics and so forth, have been able to survive this long has been a miracle. If that changes, as a small town in Florence, I don't know that the mother house in Eugene is going to keep subsidizing Florence and our healthcare facility here if they don't have some kind of level of reimbursement that they can count on. And that could change the whole economic situation.
We recognize we're very uncertain fiscal times. Because we're also, since we're a high-poverty community, certainly the, the school community is well over two-thirds of the students are considered at the federal poverty level. That means Medicaid is a big reimbursement for our hospitals as well. And with cuts coming to that or on the horizon, that is in, in the discussion, that's another loss of income or another source of income is going to be reshaped and reframed in, in probably this next legislative session.
So the current, the current debate, of course, is what will happen to people who are in the Oregon health plan, which isn't necessarily Medicaid, but people who have health insurance, their premiums could double. And that's going to affect their sensibilities about voting for high school bond.
Agreed. We know that we're, we're up against a couple of things with this. One, it is the, is the voting population, and again, the number of families who don't have a child or a grandchild in, in the schools. Number two is the economic times. And that's, that's another tough one, it's largely beyond our control. The other one is it's such a long-term commitment, either 25 or 30 years for the bond, it's difficult for people to project out what that's going to be. And even though we can demonstrate, recently with our previous middle school bond, we paid it off early, the, the highest rate was paid in the years immediately after, so the first 15 years after that one. And then every year after that, people's individual contributions went down because the tax base was increasing. I'm not saying it was increasing because of the new middle school, but it was, as Florence was growing at a modest rate, the tax, individual tax liability was coming down. That projected too far ahead for it to really be a selling point for us. And frankly, I don't think anybody can crystal ball it to see what that's going to look like in a decade, decade and a half, for much less than 30 years of the life of the bond. Most districts carry a construction debt at all times. Eugene never retires their construction debt, adds another new school, another new school to the bond, and it just keeps getting added. They never really pay it down. We paid ours off. So we currently are debt-free on school construction, as Bob showed in one slide. For now, the only mechanism we have for school construction is local, by, local options, sorry, local construction bonds sold to the taxpayers. And I don't see that changing anytime soon.
Well, in an insidious way, that kind of works against you because when the Library District asks for their levy to be renewed, you don't really see a change. And when the Fire District and the Ambulance District ask for their levies to be renewed, you don't see a change. But you guys paid yours off.
Yeah.
So it's zero.
Yep.
And now you're asking to put it back in place. Sounds like something new.
That is, that is the reason, one of the reasons we hustled up against a, without the benefit of a strong campaign in 2016 and again in 2018. We were hoping to extend the construction bonds so we could take care of these needs. And we, we missed the vote. And again, there are plenty of reasons for that, but that's what allowed it to, to eclipse. We knew it was going to eclipse anyway, so we paid it off in the year of, that's when we, we wanted at least be able to hang our hand on that and be a good steward to the public dollar. But now, you're right, instead of going from, for example, 250 to 275 for another 30 years, now we're going from zero to 275. And that's a much tougher sell in terms of what did I pay last year versus what am I going to be paying here on four.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Sally and Sally.
We appreciate the time.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll hear more about this. There will be more. Yeah.
I have a question for you.
Thank you.
Bob, I have a question for you. Do you have a report, a yay or a nay vote for the council as a whole?
Just presentation.
We just want to present to get feedback.
If you have that in the hard copy, you can get that, I'm going to use that.
I'm going to give you, I'll give you a call because I want to make sure I get together with you. Okay? Yeah, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grab the things here for me. All right. Real quick, report. Let's do the, the permit. We'll do A last. So we have permits in front of you. Pam, can you tell us what the duck roundup permit is? We have a permit that says, our code words, one duck roundup. Is that a typo or?
No. Over there, they build up the permit to have their roundup down their gardens. We didn't charge them anything for it.
Okay.
But that way, we have it on file.
What are they rounding up?
And it was a community event.
It was probably a little duck he said put in.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it was a contest, right?
Well, there you go. All right. I thought it had something to do with duck work. All right. If I see, did we have, yes, we do, very last page in the packet, it is total enforcement The numbers are down, it looks like, a code enforcement agent is in the back row, if anybody has any questions, but I think it's going pretty well. And then mayor report wise, it was two years ago in October, when I was selected to be the mayor by appointment. And then, so anyway, two years, and thanks to all the public and the council, I think this has been going pretty well. I was re-elected, so I'm going to presume it's going okay. Anyway, thanks, everybody. I still enjoy it, so I hope you do too. And then the only other item I had, and we just, this came up, and I didn't want to butt in in the middle, but the Whitmore Academy is the charter school, and they are going to brief the council on the charter school on November 19.
Okay.
So for those aware, charter school is a public school qualified for the funds that go to school districts per student or, you know.
What's the date of the year?
The 19th, the second meeting in November. So they have a short presentation, just some handouts. They're currently in Astro to purchase the CVS building there, across the street from Burger King. And it does change the school number slightly, but it's not a huge number, I think, and, and I'll let them present, but it's a couple of hundred from K through eight, so it's basically one classroom of each. My son graduated from Charter High School and, you know, it was, it was but another choice, but we had a lot of choices. Like 20 high schools in the school district, one of the biggest in the United States. But anyway, they'll make a brief presentation, and they're not asking, saying, there's no vote, they're not asking for any new taxes. It would be the available, this is the ongoing taxes you pay for schools, that pays for teachers, and they would, they're looking at buying a building, I guess, and remodeling, but by nature, charter schools, you don't have sports and that sort of thing, you're eligible if you live in the district, if you want to play sports, if there's a sport in the middle school, you can still play. So they get 80% of the student funding, 20% stays in the district for those kind of programs. So anyway, they'll make a brief presentation on the 19th. All right, item nine, is this an input? Do we have any comments from the audience? Any in the front row? Any in the second row? And the last row, that's an employee, but.
Yeah.
Okay, Linda. All right, thank you. There's no need for an executive session, let's go down the table for the good order. Larry?
I just want to thank Rich for hosting that fun event in Florence. I really enjoyed being a judge.
Good.
And vibing all delicious chili.
Yeah.
And it was good, entertainment was fine, and it was nice to socialize, and the weather was perfect, and thank you, Rich.
I'll second that. Great, welcome. Yeah. All right, Chris? You missed chili.
Yeah.
That was a good time.
I can't support it.
You can't.
I wasn't there.
All right, maybe next year.
All right. I'll, I'll take your word to the chili.
Yeah. Rich?
I did, no.
How was your chili cook-off?
It was good.
It was a meat and green chili cook-off. I ate in the restaurant too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Larry did.
I had one, but there were citizens who came up because they recognized our shirts and talked to us.
Yeah, that was effective, right. And cabs and everything, and Matthew folks, so yeah. Susan?
I know, my husband had a great time eating chili at the chili cook-off. And he went in and ate in the restaurant too. He had a great time.
Big win for, big win for Dune City. Anything else? Okay. You?
Again, I'd like to add to the, it was a great chili cook-off, it was my first time being there. I don't think we have to discuss it now, but I think that if Rich was in, I think that could grow more, with a little more input from, and maybe a little financial aid, if there's a trophies or something like.
Yeah, we're talking about like a, like a champion trophy that travels or stays, and because we are now getting our fair share of room tax that has to go to tourism and events, and that was a public event, right? We had a lot of people from out of town as well. We were thinking about that, that, you know, we get for events, I mean, that was a draw. We had people from Dune City, we had people from outside of Dune City. So the, the rules are just, it has to be for tourism, marketing, you know, for that sort of thing. I mean, I think it meets, and I don't even want you to say anything, so there's no conflict of interest. We're going to decide this for you because it's a community event.
Well, I talked to, to the competitors, they, they, I think that would help the, the number of competitors to show up. They, they work hard to, you know.
Right, with decorations and everything.
Yeah, yeah.
So I love the idea.
Yeah, I had a good time.
We can talk to Lila when she gets back. Because some of this, by design, you know, we gave Lila some, some purchasing rules of what she can spend money on, and if it's within the rules and it doesn't come, then you don't have to vote on anything. The community wants, you know, the city wants to support it. So we're trying to make sure we don't have conflict of interest either because you have to.
I think a nice trophy would be a good idea.
Yeah. All right. So we'll, we'll get some ideas and then come back. And if it's, if it's a big ticket, you got to vote on it, and if it's a small ticket, you know, then I'll talk to Lila.
I don't think they are.
No.
They don't think they're better.
Yeah, I think they are. So anyway, but good comment. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second. Let me read it. All those in favor of adjourn?
All right.
Do you need a vote? All right. Adjourn at seven or nine.